Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? No. Okay. I know we still have some straddleers that are enjoying talking, which is absolutely amazing. So we're good to have them. We'll have another open house segment at 8:00. So hopefully, everybody will have a seat now, and we'll do the presentations, and at 8:00, you'll be able to talk to the presenters again. So, welcome. Welcome, everyone. Everyone that's standing up, please, please have a seat. Welcome to Conifer Area Council's February 2025 Town Hall meeting, and thank you all for being here. We really, really appreciate it. A very, very special thanks to Core Electric Cooperative and to Kristi and Tiffany from Remax Alliance for their community support of tonight's meeting. And I'd also like to thank Conifer Jazzercise for providing water, to My Mountain Town for recording tonight's meeting, and Marketing Type Guys, Conifer Area Council's webmaster, for an amazing updated website. You should check it out. It's really got some great information on it. So, ConiferAreaCouncil.org. Go there, and there's a lot of community information there. Our speakers tonight have been asked to present just the facts, not in support of or opposition to any development, valid issue, campaign issue, anything like that. Most of you have been here many, many times, but I know we have some new people here tonight. So I just want you to know that during the presentations between now and 8:00, there will be no campaigning, and no questions, and no comments during the presentations. Then at 8:00, you'll again have a chance to talk to the presenters and everyone with information at a table during that open house segment. And there's a lot of information here, so I hope you all take advantage of that. I know that there's some people here regarding the Beaver Ranch Dog Park. No presentation tonight for that, but you will be able to talk to somebody with open space, and they're over here at 8:00. So what is going on around here? We have a lot of community updates and then a lot of amazing information tonight. First, we have the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Ed Turner. Thank you, Shirley. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight and taking the time to learn more about what's happening here in our community. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about what we're doing at the Chamber of Commerce with our events for 2025. And our first event is coming up on April 17th. We will be doing our annual awards celebration as well as celebrating the Chamber's 50th anniversary. So we're really excited to combine these two events together to honor our local businesses and the people who contribute to our community, as well as to celebrate the 50 years of our service to the community. We also are doing, kind of in conjunction with that, a cover photo competition. So you may know that you all receive a printed directory with community information, as well as local businesses. And on the cover, we always have a fantastic photograph of the Conifer area. And so we're looking for community members to contribute photos that hopefully, you know, they'll all be featured. At least one photo from every person who contributes will be in the directory, and then we're looking for the standout photo for the cover. It will be voted on by the community, along with all of the businesses and community members that we're honoring at the awards. So if you're a photographer, please go to our website to learn more about how to submit your photo for the cover. And that directory is going to be mailed out at the end of May. It goes to 10,000 houses along the 285 corridor. So it goes far and wide, so it's a great opportunity for you to feature your art. We also have our big community events coming up. Elevation Celebration this year will be on July 26th and 27th. For those of you who haven't been before, it is a two-day festival with vendors, performers. The Solita Circus comes. We have musical performances all day, both days. So we invite you to participate. We are also always looking for volunteers. So if you're interested in contributing to that event, come see me or visit our website to learn more about that. And then, of course, we finish the year off with our holiday extravaganza, the Christmas Parade. I don't know the theme yet this year, but keep an eye out for that. And if your business or organization is interested in putting a float in, the grand prize is $500. So it can go a really long ways for you in funding your organization. Last year, Tomahawk Ranch won, and $500 goes a long way for some of these organizations. So keep that in mind. And again, thank you so much for having me, and have a great evening. Oh, wait, I did have one more thing. I know we're going to be learning tonight about some wildfire, how to protect your home, and, you know, different ways that we can help protect ourselves from wildfires. And I just would really encourage you, if you are doing mitigation or need any services to protect your home, look to the Chamber first. Go to goconifer.com to find local businesses that can help you to take care of that. So thank you very much, and have a great night. Thank you, Bill. And next, we have Sandy with Conifer Area Rotary Club, and she's going to be talking about Mindfest 2025.
Thank you, Shirley. Thanks, everybody. Great to see everybody here tonight. Shalyn, yes, who attended Mindfest last year? Anybody attend? Yep, did you have fun? Was it a fun night? Yeah. Yeah, it was. So, Mindfest 2025 is coming up this Saturday. It is at Our Lady of the Pines from 10 to 2. And if you don't know what this event is about, it is about the love for our community and bringing resources to promote healthy mind, healthy body, healthy spirit, because it's a trifecta, right? All those things need to be together for people to be healthy. So we have some great speakers lined up. We have providers that are here in our community that will be with us at Our Lady of the Pines. It is a family event. It is a free event for the community. So we want folks to come, find out about the resources that are here in our community to help promote healthy mind, healthy body, healthy spirit. As I mentioned, we have speakers. We've got folks that are going to be doing some yoga and meditation. We've got a spirituality speaker. We've got suicide prevention speakers. We've got fun activities for kids to help them, you know, to have some healthy releases all day long. Come, bring your family, stick around for as long as you want. If you want to help us, we'll give you a job. We've got a lot of things going on here. We want to thank all of our sponsors for this event. But if you came last year, hopefully, you saw how much fun it is. It's going to be even better this year. 10 to 2, Our Lady of the Pines Catholic Church. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Next, we have Heather Guthlis, and Heather will be doing a presentation on Conifer Area Development happening, or maybe not happening, at least in the planning stages. She's going to talk a lot about that. Heather.
Thanks, Shirley. And first, I want to just thank Shirley and everyone from the Conifer Area Council for always inviting, planning, and zoning to these meetings. I don't think I've ever said this, but I really appreciate being invited to these so that we can connect with the community on what's going on in planning and zoning. So I just wanted to say thank you. First, I'm going to talk about development review cases that we have in the works. So since November, which was the last time we had a meeting, we actually have one less active case in Conifer. And, you know, it's kind of interesting, because in September, there was even one, or in November, there was one fewer case than in September. So it seems like we're maybe, I shouldn't say anything for that one, you know? Maybe is, I won't say. We have two new pre-applications that I wanted to talk about and four rezoning updates. I'm going to go through them kind of quickly, because they aren't very substantial. So first, I'll go through the two pre-applications, and these cases, pre-applications as a refresher, are very preliminary cases. If an owner of a property has an idea about what they want to do with their property, they can come into planning and zoning and find out what the issues might be that would come up around that proposal. And also, they would find out what kind of process they would need to go to, what kind of information would need to be submitted, what kind of reports need to be done. And so it really gives people a good idea of whether or not they want to move forward with a proposal. These are not public notice, because they are so preliminary, and only about 40% to 50% of the cases, or actually, 40% to 50%, do not ever move forward. So the first pre-application is off of Crystal Way, which is off of Pleasant Park Road, and then you've got a Holman Park Road. And it's a pretty minor rezoning case to correct a split zoning. There's an owner that owns two properties. They have two different zoning districts. They want to make them all one, so that they can subdivide the property into two properties. There's currently two properties, but one is owned something different than the other, so they want to kind of even it out and subdivide it into two properties. The other one is kind of similar. This is off of Bound Startling, and it is not that far from the 285 Fringe Road, near the parking ride, which I believe is near Richmond Hill Road. I could have that wrong. But they have, there's three lots, and one of them was never properly subdivided, so they want to combine that, all of those lots together. One of them is larger. There was one and two that are smaller. Like I said, one of them is improper, so they want to combine those all together, and then end up with two lots. Next, I'm going to go on to the rezoning cases, and this is when things get interesting. So when somebody makes a formal application, that's when we really start notifying the community about what's going on. Matter of fact, with rezoning cases, it starts even before somebody makes a formal application. In order to make the formal application, the applicant has to hold a community meeting to discuss their proposal. After that, they can make the formal application. Then, planning and zoning staff makes sure it's sufficient, has all the right documents, and we send it out to a broad variety of agencies. And homeowners associations and property owners within a certain radius will also get notification. And this is a great time to start making comments on a proposal. Actually, community meeting is the great time to start making comments, and then you can really start making more comments at the formal application. After that, it kind of goes through a process where it might go back and forth through referral agencies, and then eventually, it goes to two hearings. One before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is an advisory body, but there is public testimony that can be taken there, either virtually or in person. And then it moves on to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners, again, takes public testimony in person or virtual, where people can come and give their information about how they feel about the case. So those are your times for public comment. The first rezoning that I wanted to talk about is one that actually has been through the process. It was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on December 10th, and it was a rezoning from MR2 to MR1. And basically, it was one of those situations where they wanted to have some different uses that are allowed in MR1 that weren't allowed in MR2. One of the ones that I think maybe is of most interest tonight is the one on Shady Hill Circle, and this is near 285 and Richmond Hill Road. It is 22 acres, and they want to rezone from A2, which has a 10-acre minimum lot size, to A1, which is a 5-acre minimum lot size. The area plan for this property recommends one dwelling unit per five acres, as long as some additional wildfire policies can be addressed. So that involves doing wildfire mitigation planning at the time of the rezoning, rather than at the time of subdivision plan. The next case is also one that is nearing the end of the process, but the hearing is coming up on February 25th. This is a case that is down in the Pine Grove area. Property owner wants to rezone from commercial to planned development to allow the existing residence that's already there. And this went to the Planning Commission a few weeks ago. They recommended approval, and it's going to go to the Board of County Commissioners next Tuesday. And the last rezoning case, this one also might be interesting, is in the Conifer, what we call the Conifer Activity Center. So that's an area that does recommend more intense uses. This is, the property is kind of wedged between Highway 73 and 285, and it's about 10 acres. They want to allow light industrial office, some limited outdoor storage and residential uses. The plan does recommend residential, light industrial office in that area. The outdoor storage is something that would not be recommended by the plan. And one of the big things that I wanted to talk to you tonight was about Together Jeffco. We are at a stage in the Together Jeffco process where we are asking for public input. Together Jeffco is a process that the county started almost two years ago now to update four different plans and our regulations all at once. And right now, we are at the stage where we are looking for input by February 27th, next Thursday, on some partial drafts that we have for a comprehensive plan, which influences land uses in the future, and then also our transportation mobility plan, which influences how transportation projects are prioritized in the county. Go to TogetherJeffco.com, and you'll scroll down a little bit and see these buttons where you can click on either the text or the maps. I do want to emphasize that this is a partial draft of these documents. We wanted to get something out before we inundated people with the entire draft. We are looking at a full draft for April. That's what we're anticipating at this point in time. And then, we would have some public meetings associated with that. We are up for this partial draft. We are only accepting comments online, so please go there, put comments into either the maps or into the text document. Then, as far as the rest of the process, we are looking at a final draft to be going out July or August of this year, with hearings before our Planning Commission in September. And as a reminder, since the comprehensive plan and the transportation mobility plan are advisory documents only, so they're not regulatory, they do not get adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. Per state statute, those items are adopted by the Planning Commission. If you have any questions about any of these documents or any of the development cases that I talked about, the case manager's information is in the packet that was at the front of the room, and you can also come talk to me about this afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather, as always. Okay, so I think you probably all know that we are getting the Conifer Public Library, and we have Jo Schantz, who is the Executive Director of the Jefferson County Library Foundation. So she's going to talk a little bit about that and some opportunities for you.
Thank you. If I can figure out how to work this thing, we will have a lovely evening here. So, yes, my name is Jo Schantz Hall. I recently added Hall to the name because I am a new bride, just got married last Saturday. So, as I was introduced, I am with the Library Foundation, so we're not the library. We are the 501(c)(3) nonprofit that supports Jefferson County Public Library. So we provide fundraising support and advocacy for all 10 Jefferson County Public Libraries. So tonight, I want to talk to you a little bit more about Conifer Library. How exciting that the library gets to move, and it's going to have better hours and just more services and activities for local residents. So we're really, really very excited about that. Some of you may have participated in some of the Q&amp;A and some of the meetings. I'm assuming that some of you were asked how you feel about the Conifer Library, and you gave some valuable inputs, so that the library knew what kind of services you were looking for, what kind of outreach you needed, what types of access you needed, if you needed, you know, business services, needed access to computers, et cetera. So we're very grateful if you participated in those. I'm working with Donna Walker. Donna is the Executive Director of the library, and we're figuring out ways in which local Conifer residents can help to support the new Conifer Library, which is what I'm talking about tonight, naming rights. But before we get to that, in case you didn't know, these are some of the stats that are related to the Conifer Library. So did you know, for example, in 2023, we don't have the 2024 numbers quite yet, that over 50,000 items were borrowed from the Conifer Library, and that over 35,000 people or individual visits occurred at your Conifer Library? So it's a very popular space, and we're really delighted that we get to move and we get to expand. The new Conifer Library is going to be close to the Safeway store, so it's on Main Street, if you know where that's at. And that's kind of the picture of how it's going to look, and again, offering lots of new amenities and opportunities. So as the library conducted a lot of its community activities and gained input, this is kind of some of the things that came up with. They wanted a physical collection. They wanted a study space. They wanted a quiet study space. So all of these different activities are going to be captured in this new space. Events, so there will be a community room, et cetera, children's area, teen center, so just all sorts of different ways that you can enjoy your Conifer Library. Over on the far right, you'll see that we offer opportunities for folks to have their name on a permanent donor wall. So donations between $100 and $999, if you donate to Conifer Library, you will have your name or the name of a loved one, if you want to put this in memory or in honor of someone. We'd love to have that name up on the wall. Here are some of the opportunities that we are providing, but I will warn you, most of these opportunities are already gone. The children's area at $5,000 has already been captured by, I'm going to look at my cheat sheet here, Laura Coffey, her family, she and her family, $5,000. Judith and Mark Cook, Family Foundation, gave $10,000 to name the community room. The Conifer Area Council blessed you. You came in at $3,000 for the study room. Stan Harsha and his family, $3,000 for the community art walls. And just recently, a lady named Judith Adwater came forward with $3,000 for the teen area. We also have someone who's put in a bid for the Reading alcove at $3,000. But we do have other opportunities. If you would like to name a part of the new Conifer Library, we would love to have you do that. The new opportunities that we have, $1,000, we'll name one of the kiosks, the self-service kiosks, and then another $1,000 would name the laptop checkout. So if you're interested in any of these opportunities, I would love to talk to you and see your name up on the wall, showing how you are supporting your Conifer Library. We also have, I'm so happy to announce, $25,000 that's going toward extended hours. So how many of you have been to Arvada and have seen the Express Library that they have in Arvada? That means after hours or before hours, you can use your library card, swipe it, go into the Express Library. You can pick up your books, you can make copies, you can do other business services, all on your own. They're not manned by library staff, but it gives you the opportunity to enjoy the library. So what I'm asking is for you to please make a gift, show your love of the library and your Conifer community by making a special gift, again, using your name or the name of a loved one, or in honor of or in memory of, and we would love to show your support on the walls at Conifer Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Jo. So exciting. So now, we're going to have Jared Johnson, who is the Public Services Manager, just talk for just a couple minutes about what's actually happening at the Conifer Library right now.
Thank you for having me this evening, and I want to thank the Conifer Area Council for having us, and for Jo for presenting the donating opportunities that we have for Conifer. So updates on the Conifer project. Right now, we are going through the permitting process, so we have submitted that to the county, and that is still in the process, so we have not gotten those back yet. And then, on top of that, we have a board meeting coming up tomorrow at 5:30. You can attend it if you want, in person at Lakewood Library, or it's virtual through Zoom, and you can find that information on our website. But in that meeting, there's going to be discussion about the Conifer Library, high-level discussion about the design, the design. So the board is going to get some information on that. If you want to hear it, feel free to attend. And then, I was going to talk about... All right, well, I'll just project. So while we wait for the new Conifer Library to be built, we are still in the high school, and we encourage you to come visit us, because we've got plenty of button things happening, and some programs that are coming up on Sunday from 10 to 12. We have, we are celebrating the hit book series, Wild Robot. So we're going to build your own, we're going to have an opportunity to build your own bras. We're going to do wire color art projects, we're vax play, and we're going to show the movie as well. So feel free, if you want to bring your kids and come to that. On March 9th, we're also doing from 1 to 3, a cricket program to show you how to make your own stickers. So that is by registration, and that registration will open on Sunday. So if you want to be a part of that, feel free to register for that program. When it comes to any building project updates or programs, feel free to visit our website at JeffcoLibrary.org. All the most updated information on the programs and building projects will be on that website. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Maybe I'll yell too. In August, it was a forest fire. In January, the California fires. You always hear about wildfire mitigation and the festival space, but what else can we do to help save your home from wildfire? You can actually harden your home, and as I've been talking to people, a lot of people don't have any idea what that means. So Jordan Emroji from Core is here to talk about that tonight.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me, Shirley. I appreciate it. My name is Jordan Emroji. I'm the wildfire mitigation program manager for Core Electric, but I'm also a certified wildfire mitigation specialist through the NFPA. So tonight, I'm going to be talking about the steps you can take to protect your home from wildfire. So just in context, the wildland urban fire disasters occur during the extreme conditions of wildfire. That's 2% of all wildfires that occur, which escape control. 98% of wildfires are able to be suppressed by fire suppression resources, but the majority of the disasters that occur, like we saw in LA and like we saw in the Marshall Fire, occur during this 2% of extreme conditions. This fire behavior is becoming a lot more common, and land management can only work so fast and only do so much to prevent these types of fires. We can't control the extreme wildfires, but we can control and reduce home ignition potential. So how do wildfires ignite homes? A lot of people may think it's direct forest fire, held in the canopy, direct flame contact with the home, but in fact, 8% to 90% of homes that are destroyed during fires are ignited by fire brands or the embers that are thrown out from the fire, oftentimes a mile or more ahead of that fire run. This is determined by the home's local conditions, less so about the landscape around the home. So when wildfires transition to an urban conflagration, like we saw in the Marshall Fire, like we saw in LA, like we saw in Mahina last year, fire suppression resources are quickly overwhelmed, because one house ignites the next, and then the next, much more quickly than firefighters are able to put out the fire of that first home. quickly than firefighters are able to put out the fire of that first home. So once it's in a densely packed neighborhood like that, it's very difficult to contain. So the key to stopping these wildland urban fire disasters is to stop that transition from the wildland into the urban environment. So here is a picture of what is called the home ignition zone. How many people are familiar with this concept or have heard of the home ignition zone? That's good. I'd like to see a lot of hands. We're going to focus on the immediate zone, so the 0 to 5 feet surrounding the house and everything from the house to the roof on down. So the intention of mitigating within this zone is to avoid direct contact from flames on the surface and avoid exposure from high-intensity canopy fire, but as well as prevent ember entry into the home. So this considers the entire home and the contiguous combustible material that is connected to the home, like your decks or wooden fences or garages, things like that. These vulnerabilities to these areas largely come from that ember accumulation and entry into the house. So this includes the home from the roof, chimney, gutters, eaves, vents, exterior walls, and the windows, as well as the attachments I mentioned, and anything within 5 feet of the foundation. So garden beds, planted bushes and things like this, just immediately surrounding the home. The goal is to prevent ember accumulation against flammable material or entry into the home. Non-combustible materials are preferred, especially for the roof. I understand it's expensive to build with non-combustible materials. So mostly, we're going to emphasize the low cost, but very effective mitigations you can take. One thing I will say is if you have a wooden roof, there's not a lot that you can do that's going to prevent fire from setting that roof on fire. You have shape shapable roof, other than replacing that with asphalt, terracotta, or slate roofing. So one of the big and three mitigations that you can do is to keep the roof and gutters clean of leaf litter and debris, pine needles that accumulate over time. In particular, the areas where the flammable material tends to collect due to the wind are the same areas in nooks and crannies where embers and firebrands are going to collect when that fire's casting them and the wind is taking them. It's going to collect in those same areas and potentially ignite any material that's in there. It's also if those junctions between the roof and the walls of the home, especially if you have wood siding, you don't want embers directly piling up against that siding. It can be a very inexpensive but effective mitigation to just put some metal flashing at those junctions so that embers are up against the metal and not against the wood siding itself. So here in this picture, you'll see where the roof meets the wall there, that thin strip of metal, that's the flashing that I was talking about. Contrast that with this picture. This home does not have that metal flashing, and it was something that I called out when I did an assessment for this person. That's something they might want to consider as additional mitigation. Moving on, any gap or opening should be screened with a fine metal mesh. The recommendation from the FPA is 1/8 inch metal mesh. This is another kind of cheap and easy mitigation, but any vents, gable vents and vents within eaves or potential gaps between surfaces of the home where embers can get into those nooks and crannies, if you screen those off, you'll prevent the ember entry into the home. They could be between shingles and the wooden rooftop, air circulation vents, as I mentioned, or at the base of the exterior wall material. So it's good to take a walk around the house, looking for any kind of areas where a small ember, and they can be very small in size, could get in between something that's not flammable but contact something that is flammable. Just something to note, for PVC siding and vinyl siding, anything that's plastic can melt and fall away, which would potentially expose the flammable wood underneath that surface. So that's where that intermediate zone comes into play. That's the 5 to 30 feet out where you really want to keep any potential for crown fire away from the home by thinning the trees within that area and making sure that it doesn't sustain crown fire that close to the home. Just to talk about windows for a moment, the best assemblies are double-pane tempered glass within a metal frame. The worst is plate glass in a wooden frame, and there are a few reasons for that. Tempered glass is built to withstand high heat, but it also doesn't shatter in the same way as pane glass. When pane glass shatters, large pieces of it will fall away, whereas tempered glass... Okay, brace my voice a little bit. Tempered glass will shatter but stay in place, and especially if there's a double pane there, there's that extra layer of protection. The reason about the framing is because glass expands when it's heated, and the wooden frame actually insulates that portion of glass that's tucked within the frame. So that won't expand at the same rate as the exposed glass, which causes it to crack when exposed to heat. Conversely, if it's a metal frame, that will conduct the heat through to the glass, allow the entire pane to expand evenly, and hopefully prevent that. But the main thing really would be to not have landscated plants directly underneath the pane that would support intense fire right underneath the windows. And something that's really important to remember, the porch and the deck is part of the home. So if it's high enough, you want to keep litter cleaned out from under there, leaf litter, pine needles, things like that, as well as not store anything flammable underneath that deck. Even on the deck itself, the cushions of the furniture on the deck, those are flammable as well. So these are all the types of things to consider when you're looking at your home. What could a hot, smoldering ember sit on and catch fire that might create intense fire right up next to your home? That's what we're trying to avoid. If you have a low deck that is difficult to clean out from under, then again, use that bloody metal mesh and screen it off. That will also help keep critters out from under there, just kind of a win-win. Again, don't store flammable items underneath. This is even consider, you know, the tarp that might be over something itself is flammable, and just anything that could support fire. Again, the cushions and the covers of outdoor furniture can ignite and sustain combustion as well. Between the exterior wall and the ground itself, it's recommended to have six inches of space where it's just like a concrete foundation that won't support fire. Remove the firewood pile away from the side of the house. I know it's convenient to have it up against the house or out on the deck, but that is something, especially if you have to evacuate and come home, in a lot of cases, you'll notice the firefighters have kicked that stack of firewood out away from your home because it's just an easy place for embers to get into the nooks and crannies and obviously commit to burn. So it is a huge source of risk. And then that area within 5 feet of the exterior wall should not support any fire. And something to bear in mind is that these firebrands will ignite wood mulch, recycled rubber, pine needles. So really, fine gravel is the best thing to use for landscaping within that 5 feet of the base of the home. And you should landscape with plants that do not burn intensely, like just flower bushes and succulents, that's really the best thing. Really avoid juniper. That would be my number one recommendation if there's juniper anywhere around your house, and legit. Not only does it burn and dry out easily, it also contains a resin that makes it burn even more readily than other plants. So these are just a couple of pictures of examples of what that kind of landscaping can look like. Like I said, the gravel, the succulents, the low flowers, and nothing too close to the windows, right underneath the windows that would sustain intense fire. So that's all I have. If you're interested in more information about Core's wildfire mitigation program, I'll be standing back there. I have some brochures for you, so I have an answer to questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Okay. So next, Rachel Durkin with Jeffco Extension was going to be here and talk about plant wise fire...
fire-resistant plants. She was not able to make it because of pregnancy issues. Marilyn Salzman is going to go over just three slides with us regarding that.
When Julie asked me to do this, I didn't tell her that I inherited my mother's black thumb. So if she's talking about plants, I'm wrong. But I can keep true. So fire-resistant plants. There is a website, idahofirewise.org, and they rank plants from 0 to 10 in terms of their fire resistance. And it's a really interesting website. I recommend it to you, look at if you're looking at doing some new planting around your house. There's no fully fireproof plant, but some are more fireproof than others, and this website has a lot of good information. So things that make plants more fire resistant are low oil or resin content, high moisture content, compact growth form, green stems, and their ground tone. Those are some of the characteristics of the more fire-resistant plants. So some examples here. What is interesting to me is pestamin is one, if you like purple flowers. And Russian sage, which I have been trying to grow over years unsuccessfully, is not a fire resistant plant, so my black thumb has come in handy. Pestamin grows naturally in our yards of Conifer, and Russian sage, if you plant it, is not a good idea. So you can learn that all back from the Idaho Firewise website. And those are some of the other plants, something like rocky mountain geranium, some of those are natural wildflowers that grow in our neighborhoods. Lookout Mountain Nature Center actually has a low vulnerability garden that's always open to the public, and they have two times this summer, June 28th and August 16th, where master gardeners will be there to talk to you about fire resistant plants. That's all I have. Thank you.
The other thing we have, we have a lot of invasive species. A lot of things that should not be growing here, they are not native to Colorado. Alicia Dora, who is with Jefferson County Open Space, has a presentation regarding this. Thank you so much.
So I'm the invasive species management coordinator, and invasive species management is part of the general plan. And though we do consult with Open Space and we live here, so we're going to talk a little bit today about invasive species. So I just like to start my talks off with the questions. Raise your hands to who thinks that words are native to Colorado. You guys are wonderful. You guys know that they're not. So what is an invasive species? An invasive species is something that's not native to the area it's growing, and it impacts our natural ecosystems, that displace native species, impacts our recreational or agricultural and our ecologics. They move in and take advantage of voids in our systems. So the invasive species management program, we're a three-person team. Up until a year ago, we were a one-person team. But we've been very lucky to be able to hire two full-time specialists. So the majority of what we do is enforce our noxious weed and our pest laws. So for noxious weeds, our jurisdiction is within the non-federal unincorporated portions of the county. For pests, it's the non-federal portions of the county. So as you can see, we have a lot of parcels that we get to visit. So what are we? We are the point person for education outreach. We are the technical expert for the county. We do some enforcement, and we also make sure that we are in compliance with state mandates. So we work with things like that are nuisance pests, so things like Japanese beetle, Emerald Ashmore. You guys have all heard about those in the news here recently. And has Japanese beetle gone up to this elevation yet? Be thankful, because they are just taking over down in urban areas, some of the Denver metro area. So we also assist CPW in doing some surveys for aquatic nuisance species, things like the New Zealand mudsnail, which was found in Bear Creek about two years ago. We also work with river pests, pradochs, when they're approaching on neighboring lands. And then also, there are a number of species that are not yet known to occur in Colorado or Jefferson County. And if they were to occur here, we would assist CPW getting rid of them. So the most of what we work on are regulated pests, pests that have been designated by the county, the state, or the federal agencies. And so here in Jefferson County, the one that we spend most of our time on is mountain pine beetle. So mountain pine beetle spends most of its life under the bark of trees. The larval form feeds in vertical and horizontal tunnels, and it causes disruption in the movement of water and nutrients, which then eventually kills the tree. So this time of the year, what you need to be looking for are these pitch tubes, which are the kind of pinkish orange popcorn-shaped hardened sacks. And then if you are seeing that on your tree, you need to peel the bark back about the size of your hand above there to look for those galleries. And then you'll also be looking for brass in those galleries. So we've been seeing this increase here in the last two years, and we're really recommending people control it if they have it on their property. You need to be looking at your green trees. Those are the ones that are currently infested. Those are the ones that you need to be spending your time on. There's different control methods. All of this information is available on our website. So some of the more expensive options are chipping or masticating or treating live trees that have not been infested to protect them from being infested. You don't want to do that to all your trees, just high-value trees. And then we also spend a lot of our time with noxious weeds in Colorado. We have a prioritized list. We have List A and List B eradication weeds that are required to be completely eliminated. We also have the seedwoods that are more common. I have a feeling that a lot of you recognize this, most of us probably have seen that maybe in your yard. We also have weeds on the seed list, things like common mullein. Those are ones that are recommended for control, and the same thing for the watchlist species, ones that we're not quite sure yet how they're going to manifest themselves here in Colorado, but we recommend controlling those too if you have it. We have this great resource that will help people kind of develop their integrated management plan, helps walk you through the different steps. And then that's it for me. So thank you very much.
We are going to buy a life for the school. Sorry about this. My goodness. Okay. So next, we have Christina Duff, who's just going to do a little bit of announcement. She's Jeffco Open Space senior planner regarding the conservation agreement.
This is not my picture. We kind of are a little bit vague tonight, but we're here just to introduce you, invite you to attend an upcoming house that we had, and we're nursing or updating conservation agreement to a five-year ban. that we had in reverse, who are updated conservation agreement for a five-year master plan. We're going to be right here at West Jeffville on November, March 3rd, um, from 5:00 to 7:00. It's just a drop-in to get some feedback on our high-level draft holds. Many of you participated in the lessons earlier in 2024. So thank you for that. This is our next step. So we've heard from you, here's what we're thinking about during the next five years, if we hit that mark. So we'd love to talk to you about that that night. If you've got any announcements on the table and if you have any questions, we'd love to have more. So thank you.
Christina. Um, next we have Colorado State Representative Tammy Story. And she's going to speak loudly and upfront so you can all hear her.
Good luck. Hi, everyone. I'm Tammy Story. I'm your state representative and I represent House District 25, uh, which includes this area. It's the foothills of Jefferson County, south of I-70, and then a portion of unincorporated Littleton around the Chatfield High School articulation area. Um, so we are in the midst of session right now. Um, it starts in early January, runs till early May. It's a total of 120 calendar days. And we're hard at work. We're in the middle of the process where bills are being introduced and run through one chamber and then move on to the second chamber. As long as they continue to get passed and eventually make their way to the governor's office is the goal for signature. And, um, it's, uh, it can take a long time for all of that to happen for a single bill. As we get closer and closer to the end of session, things move a little bit faster um, as we try to pack as much into the session as the session ends towards, um, early May. Um, I sit on the education committee as well as Ag, Water, and Magic Resources Committee. I'm the chair of the capital development committee. We look at all the, um, um, construction needs, capital needs for all of our state buildings, uh, which includes the capital complex, where the capital lives and some of the support buildings surrounding it. And then other buildings like the Department of Health, the Department of Revenue. And then also all of the Department of Corrections, so all of our, um, state prisons as well as our, um, institutions of higher education that are public as well, our four-year institutions, as well as our community colleges, and then all of our state parks and their buildings, their welcome centers and their parking lots. And so we hear, um, from all of those entities in December about what their capital needs are. They, they present to us their highest needs in the list. And we, um, have several days of hearings with all of those folks. And then we work towards, um, uh, making a prioritization list that is submitted by February 15th. So we just got that done last week. That list goes to the joint budget committee, um, as our recommendation of projects to fund. I wish I could tell you that we do a really good job of funding all those projects. Um, but we are not in a very good place, um, in Colorado. And, uh, generally we get about a billion dollars of high priority needs from all of those entities that I mentioned. And of that billion dollars, we sometimes have around a hundred and fifty million dollars sort of budget to shoot for. So that's about 15% of what's submitted to us is what we can generally fund. But then you also have to know that those are just the top priority projects for Department of Corrections, higher education institutions, state parks, et cetera. Um, behind that list is probably 10 or 15 times that amount. So 10 or 15 billion dollars of capital needs in the state. And we, so we really end up funding about one and a half percent of that. Um, and that's due to very limited budget that we have. And this year in particular, um, we are, we have less funding to work with than we had last year. We are about $700 million short of having funding we need to cover everything we covered last year. Um, but you add into that another 350 million, um, from a ballot initiative that passed that funds local law enforcement. So if you all remember that from the, um, November ballot. But that puts us about a billion behind, um, of being able to fund everything that we should. So we will be making cuts, um, to programs and systems um, in order to have a balanced budget going forward. So it's not going to be a great funding year. It's not a good year for legislators such as myself to be, um, working on bills and have any kind of fiscal note. Because if they do, it's unlikely that we'll be able to get it through. Um, so just bear with us. Um, feel free to reach out to me anytime. My website is on the Assembly page and Angela's copying at me. I hope that I'll leave the stage. Uh, but feel free to reach out or I'll hang around a little bit if you have any questions. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you, Tammy. And next we have Senator Mark Basely, and he's going to be talking just a bit of a minute about what the senator is doing.
He just talked. Hi, everyone. Good to see you all. So, uh, I'm that guy. And, uh, just proud to serve as your state senator. So there are three areas that I, I focus on. Um, and first let me say, last year in the, uh, the state legislature, we set a record of 705 bills, which is like 30 more than the record from a couple of years earlier. Let's just see how much we can micromanage this year. I hope we don't go that far, but it was, uh, too much. But anyway, I, I focus on three areas, uh, economic opportunities and safety and education. And so those are my focuses on bills that I, that I will carry as well. So, um, on economic opportunities, um, you know, we broke around just this past September on, uh, the new, um, uh, quantum tech park in Armano. So that is as a result of our winning the tech hub for quantum, which was a huge win. We were up against, uh, several other states. And, and so we got that designation from the federal government. Um, we put in, we put in matching funds of like $74 million of Colorado taxpayer dollars, which is hard for a Republican to swallow. However, um, the return on that investment is like a billion dollars coming back our way. So we already have built a campus, this is the education piece to all of this. We already built that first, um, quantum park in Armano, so right here in Douglas County, and is managed by a college school of mine. So very cool stuff, but if you're not, um, plugged into the quantum computing world, that's the next generation of, uh, of quantum computing. And it's going to change everything. Economic opportunity, um, another area, I'm, I'm sponsoring a tax credit bill. tries to woo some things festival coming to Colorado. So that would be a boulder. And we are in the final throes. We're here any day now, whether they choose us or Cincinnati or Salt Lake City. And I think we're going to win this. And this would be like having the Super Bowl come to Colorado for 10 years in a row. Pretty amazing. Um, lastly on safety, um, so I'm carrying a bill, 047, that's trying to reverse. I hope this works, hope it passes. It will reverse the law from 2013 that prevents law enforcement from working with the federal government when they arrest someone, not sweeping, but when they arrest someone for a crime that they suspect is in the country illegally, then they cannot currently work with ICE or any other. Um, so they, this would allow them to do that. And last three, uh, since my time is, uh, they can, uh, then, um, working on a project, artificial artillery to try to preempt wildfires. So very cool type of technology from the hobby market right here in Jefferson County to help us to place fire aircraft on the place where a fire is predicted to break out. Anyway, um, it's always good to be here. Sure, I'm a tight ship, as you can all see, but, uh, I, I love talking to everybody. So I'll hang around for a while. Thank you for being here today.
I'm trying this. Nope. I don't think it worked. Okay. Um, and then we have Leslie Dowell, County Commissioner. She's been telling me about this. So I'm on a Thursday. And this mic is not working. Okay, no problem.
Sorry, you've used all your time.
Oh. Forty-five minutes is $20?
Hi, everyone. I'll use my outdoor voice in the projector and hopefully you can hear me all right. I'm Jefferson County Commissioner Leslie Dowell. I've served on the Board of County Commissioners with our newest county commissioner, Rachel Zenzinger, as well as Andy Kurt. We are so excited to welcome Rachel to the Board of County Commissioners. She's got about a month into office and already she, her breadth and depth of experience has been extraordinary, especially as your county commissioners watch what is happening in the state legislature and how different bills either positively or potentially negatively could impact Jefferson County. In fact, just today I testified on two bills related to wildfire resiliency. So please know we're watching those issues closely. Uh, just one quick note about Commissioner Zenzinger. She served in the state senate and she was also the chair of the joint budget committee. So as you've heard Representative Story talk about those budget challenges facing the state, you can bet we're watching closely to see how those potential cuts could affect services and programs right here in Jefferson County. And we're also grateful to Senator Basely for his work in the legislature as well and the court working with him on some additional wildfire resiliency bills moving forward. Speaking of wildfire resiliency, another area that we're watching very closely are those potential funding, federal funding freezes. And as you know, that's the ports right now. But those funding freezes could impact us in several different ways. Areas regarding public safety, roads and transportation, human services, wildfire efforts, reducing our risk here in, you know, one of the highest-risk areas in the state and in the region. In fact, uh, we are applying in this time with the help of an incredible leader in Jeffco, Ryan Keating. He's our fire management officer. He's been here at the Conover Town Hall and he has applied for, he was in the middle of applying for a $10 million grant, which would be, uh, tremendous opportunities in terms of reducing our wildfire risk. Some of the ideas that we have been talking about is creating a micro grant for those of you who need some additional assistance to build or create more defensible space to lower wildfire risk throughout your home and in your neighborhoods. We're also looking at how we can build up the fire management office so we can do more work that's related to mitigation around rights of way. We know how important that is to you and to us, especially when it comes to evacuation in communities where there is only one way in and one way out, which we know is a concern across Conover and Green Pine and in our foothills communities. In addition to that, we want to thank our Jeffco community for approving 1A, which removed artificial caps and now allows us to invest dollars over the taper cap right back into services and programs. And it focuses on two main categories. The first one is public safety. Part of public safety is wildfire resiliency. The second category that the dollars can be used for is public infrastructure, road improvement, bridges, culverts, all those important infrastructure needs that we have here in Jefferson County. So thank you, Jeffco voters, for approving 1A. And I want to put something on your radar screen. And that is, in about a couple of months, we will be asking community members to consider being part of the Citizens Advisory Committee that will work with us to determine in these two categories, how is to leverage the surplus dollars that we have for the greatest gain, for the greatest effectiveness in those two areas. So if you're interested, keep your eye at jeffco.us, our website, for more information. Just real quick, going back to those federal grants, um, just to give you an idea of the scope and the potential impact on Jefferson County. We, Jefferson County receives about $100 million in federal grants affecting those areas I mentioned earlier, public safety, roads, transportation, human services and more. It's about 130 different services and programs through our sheriff's office and other areas. And that just gives you an idea of the potential impact. And an additional $100 million for human services. I want to close on a positive note, if that's all right, Angela. I know they used up all my time, so I'll take just 10, 15 seconds. Let me take a moment to recognize our Jeffco Open Space volunteers. Do we have any who are here with us tonight? I see one hand pop up, a couple of hands here and there. Huge thanks to you. We had an opportunity to hold that. I wanted to just mention briefly our conservation awards that were hosted by Jeffco Open Space. We have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers across our county who are stewards of 230 miles plus of trails. And I don't know where we would be without you and we want to recognize you and thank you for your tremendous work. And here's a stunning data point to leave you with. It's a positive one. When you add up all the hours that our amazing Open Space volunteers dedicate to our county, it is the equivalent of an investment of $2 million in our parks and our open space. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, any concerns you want to share with your board of county commissioners, you can contact all three of us at commish, C-O-M-M-I-S-H, at jeffco.us. Great to see you all tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Leslie. So, um, just so you know, in the next day or two, uh, there will be a video. You will get a link if you have signed up on our, on our list, our email list. Um, it will also be on our website, so conovertowns.org. Um, so you can watch this again or as you may just watch it. Um, please stick around and talk to all of the representatives. We've got a lot of people representing Open Space. Our community ambassadors, if you are new tonight and do not know who your community ambassador is, please go talk to them because they are a critical piece of the whole community. So please talk to them. Um, Director Jordan about home gardening, we've gotten lots of brochures of invasive plants and, you know, the fire resistant plants, all kinds of information here tonight. So please, um, stop by and get, get that. I think there's still some water, coffee, maybe cookies in the back. Um, we do have, the Conover Road Route, um, going back to their table. They have received a $25,000 grant for thinning along edge, the edges of dangerous evacuation routes. I'm sorry. And you can volunteer to help with that. So go inside of the Road Route table, but please stick around and take advantage of all the information and all the expertise here tonight. Our next town hall meeting is Wednesday, April 16th, and we hope to see you all here. Thank you so much.